Good evening. I want to let everyone know that we are participating via Zoom with most of the board members that will be in attendance, as well as media is also online with this board meeting. And this meeting is being livestreamed on our cable channel. So we will go ahead and start the meeting. This regular meeting of April 13th, 2020 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Ms. Bradley?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Thank you.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy? Ms. Whitman?
Here. I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda as submitted. Oh, that's right. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 9th and the special meetings on March 16th, March 18th, and March 24th, 2020 as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 9th, the special meetings on March 16th, March 18th, and March 24th, 2020, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will have Mr. Kelleher come up and review the certified budget proposal.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Rheingans. Tonight, we are asking the board to approve the budget for the fiscal year 2021 along with the levy rate that goes assesses property taxes, which provides funding for that budget. So tonight, I'd like to go through a little bit of the history on that and go through some important facts. And for that purpose, the Finance Department puts together each year a document called the Certified Budget Proposal. And we're going to go through a few of the pages highlighting some of the key issues. In that document, it includes a message from Superintendent Rheingans. It also provides detailed information about the levy rate focusing on the general fund portion. It includes how spending authority is calculated for the general fund and how it is funded. It shows the history of different pieces of information, as well as comparisons to other Iowa large school districts. So tonight, we will go through a few of the pages. So next screen, please. The first page we want to talk about tonight is on page four of the document, has to do with certified enrollment. When you look at that, certified enrollment is a very important piece of the calculation of the authorized budget for the general fund. And as you can see from the 10-year history, the districts had a fairly stable level enrollment throughout that 10 years. Next screen, please. The next chart I would like to bring attention to is the state supplemental aid history chart. It's a 20-year compilation of all the different levels of funding set by the state legislature. And as you can see, in five of the last six years, the levy rate has been below 2.5%. All six of the last six years, I'm sorry. And 10 of the last 11 years has also been below 2.5%. So when you add together the last 11 years, the average spending authority increase that the government, state of Iowa, has given us averages at 1.82%. That is why schools continually, year after year, are asking our legislatures for more funding. So over the last 11 years, I'm going to repeat that, we've averaged 1.82% in new funding. Next, go ahead, Stan.
Which is below our increased... Our inflationary costs.
Yes.
With costs of health insurance, premiums, a variety of other... The cost of doing businesses has outrun that 1.82%, which is why you sometimes see... Why we're in the position we're in with our unspent balance.
Correct. Next screen, please. So this shows, the column I wanted to show is particular, is the district levy rates. This gives the citizens and the board kind of a breakdown of the levy rate itself and what makes up the component units. The top portion being the general fund, and then you see the other two funds below that, the management and embezzle. So it shows the breakdown of that levy rate. And you can see for this year, we're requesting a $14.66 levy rate. Next screen, please. This is on page 11. I want to bring your attention to the top chart. That shows a 15-year history of the levy rate that the district has requested. You can see this current levy rate is 5 cents lower than last year. We had a $14.71 levy rate, and we're dropping it by 5 cents. But I also want to bring your attention to, it is more than $2 lower than the highest portion of the levy rate, which was back in the '09, '10, '11, '12 years, back when it was almost $17. So we are still substantially lower than the highest rate from a decade ago. Below that chart is some information I want to share as well. It shows the levy rate of the Dubuque for this year compared to the levy rates of the other Iowa urban schools from last year. And as you can see, Dubuque is near the bottom end of that chart. And the reason we have to compare it to last year levy rate for those other districts is because at this time, we put this information together, we don't know what the levy rates are for those other districts. But it's always a good comparison point because year to year, as you can tell by the chart above, the levy rate does not change substantially. So those other districts usually tend to follow that same pattern. So I think it's a good comparison purposes for our citizens. Next screen, please. This is the document that was in the paper, the official budget that we are asking you to approve tonight, along with the levy rate, which is on the bottom of that page, the $14.66. Next screen, please. Finally, this is a comparison to show what the levy rate that the district is proposing on all the different types of property, the major components of property. We have the residential, the commercial, the industrial, and the multi-residential shown for comparison purposes. Something I want to bring to your attention is there's three variables included in this document. There's the equalization order, the rollback amount, as well as the tax levy. Both the equalization order and the rollback are not controlled by the district. That is controlled at the state level. So any changes in that from year to year is done by the Iowa Department of Revenue. Our only piece of that is the levy itself. So you can see in the residential piece, when we apply our levy rate to the average household assessed value, it's still going up slightly this year, even though we are decreasing our levy rate from the prior year. And that's because there was a change in that equalization order, as well as the rollback amounts. So both of those affect it besides our levy rate. You can see on the commercial and industrial properties, that the equalization orders and the rollbacks did not apply this year, so they actually have a decrease from the prior year. The big change is unfortunately is for the multi-residential. And again, that was changed by the state. There's a large increase in the equalization order, which is driving up the valuation amounts. So that's the impact on that. Does any of the board members have any questions on that document or any of the information I went over tonight? All right, hearing done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just remind folks who might be watching at home, this was also discussed at length by the Board at Support Services Subcommittee Meeting, which is also a public meeting. So it has been vetted to some degree by the Board already.
Yes, it has. Thank you. Start with the motions.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate, authorized payment of legal notice publications to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. It's time for public comments, but there is nobody who has been here for... Has showed up for public comments, so we can move on to the motion.
I move the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2020 and 2021 as published. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to board salutes. And I believe, Mr. Donahue, you have a board salute for us.
I do. This one is in recognition of Kobe and his IT team. You guys know, usually the only time technology gets any press is when things aren't working. But Kobe and his team, they've continued to really ensure that our infrastructure's been sound, it's been reliable and working. Obviously, as we transition to an online learning environment, we know that doesn't just happen overnight. We've done a lot of... Kobe and his team have done a lot of work in making sure that devices are distributed, particularly at the middle school level, ensuring that applications like Seesaw and those are really working to their fullest extent. And as all of us know, connectivity is a huge issue as we continue to evolve. And I know that we've already distributed 150 hotspots. We have another 125, I believe, that are in the works. So there's just great collective work being done by this team, and we want to make sure that they understand our appreciation and our gratitude for that good work.
Yes, they do. Thank you. Mr. Prohaska?
I have a couple more salutes. First of all, nice to see Joni back. Thank you, Joni, for being back. Thank you to Tammy and for all of you that are physically present for the meeting tonight. I'd like to also give a shout out to all of our... Anybody that was involved in our food service, in our providing lunches, grab and go lunches, the administrators, transportation, food service workers, and all those involved in making this great contribution for our families, because it fills a very important need. I'd like to also give a shout out, and Mike kind of alluded to this, that our administrators and teachers for putting together the online lessons for our students. I know from personal experience that it requires a lot of work, and I admire our teachers, and I want to give a special recognition to them and our administrators, our principals, for providing these learning opportunities for our kids in these challenging times. So, great job.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other board members that would like to have a salute?
Just to build on Mr. Prohaska's salute, this is an unprecedented time for anyone in district leadership. And I certainly want to thank and commend Superintendent Rheingans and his team for the steady hand, the judicious consideration of all of the unexpected and those few expected that are out there. Just to... We know that we're in good hands through this turbulent time. And to say thank you, certainly to Superintendent Rheingans, but also to his team members who are all doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Their board meeting is going fast, so I'll make supper. It's over.
Oops.
Make it for everybody.
Yeah. But we haven't truly.
Okay, we shall move on to visitors and open forum. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Nobody is here in the board at this time unless they pop around the corner, so we are ready to move on.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Consent agenda, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board members wish to have polled? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Donahue, we will go ahead and go to you.
Okay. We've got two items out of Facility Support Services.
Joni, I don't have a motion.
The first has to do with the Hempstead Parking Lot expansion. I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bond and certificate of insurance with Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC for the Hempstead Parking Lot Expansion Project in the amount of $172,295.50.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC for the Hempstead Parking Lot Expansion Project in the amount of $172,295.50. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
And I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the quarterly budget report. Is there any discussion? You went to... Yep, Mr. Kelleher.
A couple points that I would like to bring to the attention of the board in the quarterly budget. First of all, looking at both the revenues and expenditures for the Student Activity Fund for the month of March, you can see there was a significant decrease in both of those, both the revenue and expenditures, part in due to spring break taking place in March, as well as the beginning of the COVID shutdown of the school. So therefore, there was a lot less activity for the students to participate in, so less dollars going through that fund. Also, I wanted to bring your attention to the Nutrition Fund. And for similar reasons, the revenue is down quite a bit in the Nutrition Fund for the month of March. Expenditures are down slightly. At this point in time, we are still paying our staff, even though we're in the shutdown. So the expenditures did not reduce by the level that the revenues reduced for the Nutrition Fund. And they're also still buying supplies for the daily handouts of breakfast and lunch. We still incur expenses for that. The last piece I want to bring your attention to is the Sales Tax Fund and the expenditure piece. When you look, you see in the final column that it's over budget by about $3.8 million for round numbers. This is because the budget includes the purchase orders for both the ALC vocational tech building that's being put up and will be completed by December of next year, as well as the architect fee for seniors Phase 2 project that was around $2 million. Both of those are included in the Sales Tax Fund. However, when we put the budget originally together for this last March, neither of those projects had been talked about or planned. They were developed after the development of the budget. So they weren't included, so it's overspent. But no, the board should know, we still have cash in hand that will pay for those two projects. It's just they weren't listed as an expenditure on the budget last year. That is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Donahue. All right, that takes us now to Ed Programs and Policy Committee Report. We did not have a meeting, but do you want to give us an update on where we are, Mr. Rheingans?
Absolutely. So as we transitioned from sort of a normal operation to the pandemic COVID-19 scenario, as Nancy had mentioned earlier, the team here has done a fantastic job of responding to that, starting with the most basic needs of our students, and that is food. We have served... I don't have an exact number with today's data in it, but it's above 20,000 meals have been served at the sites, the school sites. And we're working with partners, partners are collaborating with us. I mean, just a great working relationship with the Dream Center, the Project Rooted, Boys and Girls Club. They're all operating their own sites, and I don't have their numbers, but those numbers probably are similar to ours. So many, many meals being served to students who would go without without that effort. So that was the first step. Secondly, then, gearing up to provide opportunities for our kids to continue to learn, to use their brain, to think, to be creative during this time. And so, starting initially at the elementary level with Seesaw and packets, we have many families who come to the meal distribution sites just to pick up the packets of the learning for their younger students. It's been extremely successful. We have many students who... Or parents who get on Seesaw every day or multiple times per week to participate in educational opportunities there. Last Wednesday, as we talked about, we pivoted to providing opportunities for our secondary students. We had to wait until Wednesday because of handing out laptops at the middle school level, as well as hotspots. We still have more hotspots that were supposed to be here last week. We're hoping to hear this Friday so we can get even more families connected. But we had... I have the number here. Over 3,000 students at the secondary level participate in the first 24 hours, and those numbers have gone up significantly since that time. So we do have many of our students who are participating in voluntary opportunities. I can tell you from having two sons at the high school level, they receive weekly interactions with their teachers for all of their classes, with assignments, with videos, with opportunities. My one son did a speech today that was then provided to the teacher. Teacher gave feedback. It's not graded, it's not part of gaining credit, but it is an opportunity for him to learn. So our teachers, Mr. Prohaska mentioned also, working really hard to be creative. It's not just to sit and get, sit in front of a computer. But what can they do to interact with their classmates, AP classes, with their teachers to get feedback on the work that they're doing? So it's been a pretty monumental effort. Prior to this situation, to be certified from the state, there's about a two-year process, and we were able to move pretty far down that path in the first few weeks. We continue to look at the difference between the optional versus the required. The required is a pretty heavy lift for a school district the size of ours with the complexity, because we need to ensure all students have connectivity. We have to serve our ELL students, which we are currently doing, but it's hard to get to 100% when you have 17 languages. All of our IEPs must be in place. So we have a great sort of step with the volunteer piece in continuing to look at how would we or could we move in the future to a required, whether that be yet this year or more likely next year or in future years, should this become a situation that repeats itself, which of course, we all hope it doesn't happen.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, that moves us to new business, and we might as well start with you again, Mr. Kelleher, and explain what the first motion will be about, about the tax bond.
Yes, we are asking the board to begin the process of looking at issuing, selling revenue bonds here in July. If you recall, back in approximately November, December, we sold bonds to refinance older bonds, fiscal year 2012 and 2013. With this July issuance, we're hoping to refinance both our 2014 as well as our 2015 bonds. They total almost $25 million in total principal. So by doing that, we're hoping to save interest, changing the rate to a lower rate than what's on those current bonds. And this is the process that we have to go through. So we started this with the hearing now, and we'll have another hearing next month. But we're looking to explore the market at this time. We don't know the total effects of what COVID-19 will be for the purchasers of these bonds, but we at least want to explore it to see if we will still have interest savings. So we will be soon hiring a placement agent to look for sellers or purchasers of those bonds, and we will begin that process. So hopefully, we'll have good news, find out someone or some entities would like to buy our bonds, and we'll be able to reduce our interest rates.
Great. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education adopt a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $29 million school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue and refunding bonds.
Second. We have a roll call.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $29 million school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue and refunding bonds. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitman?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
I move the Board of Education accept the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the employment contract of Heather Riley effective immediately.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education accept the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the employment contract of Heather Riley effective immediately. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days. Is there any discussion?
Maybe just a point of clarification. We do this every year during this meeting. Primarily, it's for snow days. The law requires that we build a calendar that originally includes 175 days for our seniors. When we have snow days, it would take it below that. We have traditionally waived that so we keep graduation... to do this for our seniors, just in the event that something changes between now and graduation.
Great, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. I will read the proclamation and then ask for a motion afterwards. We have a proclamation here on the census. Whereas the United States Census, which is mandated by the U.S. Constitution, enumerates every person in the country regardless of citizenship status, and is fundamental to fair and representative government. And whereas the 2020 decennial census has critical implications for the state of Iowa, and determines its allocation of seats in the House of Representatives, and billions of dollars in federal funding. And whereas a fair and accurate count on the 2020 census will help ensure that Iowa communities, families, and students receive, are represented in our democracy, and receive critical services and supports for education, healthcare, transportation, and infrastructure, including rural utilities and broadband. And whereas census counts of school-aged children and children in poverty at the state and school district levels are used to determine funding for the U.S. Department of Education's two biggest elementary and secondary programs. Title I, compensatory education and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Special Education, as well as the National School Lunch Program. And whereas census data are used to calculate the rate at which federal funds match state spending on programs that support the health and well-being of Iowa students, including temporary assistance to needy families, and the Children's Health Insurance Program. Now, therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim that the district will inform its families, staff, and other leaders within the community about the critical importance of a complete count and participation in the 2020 U.S. Census, provide appropriate resources and support to assist in securing a complete count, work in partnership with the U.S. Census Bureau, as well as organizations focused on traditionally undercounted communities, to explore other activities and maximize opportunities to ensure a complete count, and further recognizes that every Iowa child and adult counts. Will be signed on this date, 13th day of April 2020. May I have a motion, please?
I move-
Oh, go ahead, Nancy.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation in support of a complete count in the decennial U.S. 2020 Census.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation in support of a complete count in the decennial U.S. 2020 Census. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The last motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 806905 and number 804673 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students 806905 and number 804673 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any other board member or administrative issues at this time?
Nothing on the administrative end, just hopefully, we see you all in a more normal setting a month from now.
I hope so, too. All right. Anything from the board? Okay, there being none.
End of it.
We are adjourned. Thank you.